Alright, so we'll go through this $3 re-buy. I haven't had a chance to go through it at all yet, so we're kind of all gonna be fresh here. Talking about the different spots. Paul, you know, this is your game. I think you mentioned to me that, uh... You know, the final table gets pretty interesting with a pretty aggressive reg. Anything else noteworthy ahead of time?
Um, I'm not really a look-through, so, no.
Okay. Alright, what's, uh...
It was just the only deep one I had this week, so it was like, you just asked for the game, so I sent it.
Gotcha. Alright.
So maybe it's shit.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, if we, uh, if we get through this game, we've got another, uh... $2.50 game we can, uh, we can take a look at, so... Alright, and for anybody that is not familiar with the stats... We've got, I've got the HUD up here, so you guys can reference this for the stats up here. And Paul, while you're not talking, uh, just mute your mic, 'cause if you're gonna, the typing is loud. The same thing happens on mine as well.
Yeah.
No worries. Yeah, whenever you guys wanna jump in and talk, just unmute, fire away. We'll keep it conversational rather than typing. You guys can type if you want as well, but... Alright, let's see what we got here. So let's just go through the hands, and, you know, first glance, what I always do when starting is figuring out who's to our left. You know, obviously, you won't have these stats while you're first starting in the first hand, but regardless, you know, whenever, you know, I'll talk about them, because whenever you do see them, and they're like that, then we can, uh... You know, we can reference what to do. So, if we look to our left... We've got, this guy's a reg, this OMG, it's, however you wanna say his name, Mihai, Mahai, whatever. Big Bad Bluff, reg. Is this guy a reg? Seems to have a couple hundred hands on him here. I don't know if anybody recognizes him.
Don't really recognize the guy.
Okay. So otherwise, not a real reg-filled table at the moment, so we'll take it for what it's worth. So let's, uh, let's fire away. See if we get to some good spots. Now, let me do, let me ask this question, since we're just starting this three re-buy, and, you know, even if this takes a little, takes a little while, I, I, I think it's a good thing to talk about for the three re-buy guys. There has been a trend recently of people discussing and even testing out, experimenting with not re-buying in the beginning. You know, just starting with a 1500 stack. Does anybody have any thoughts, one way or the other?
I don't really have tried it myself. I spoke with a couple of people who did it. Uh, they tried it, but they noticed they're getting a lot less caches and deep finishes. So most of the people I know are pretty much back to instant double re-buy again.
I, uh, I read a forum, T+T, yesterday was on about it as well. There was a discussion about that there.
What, what did they say?
He was saying that, um, this guy called Target Me, I think he's called, is he on there? And, um, he seems pretty decent, and he was saying that if it's, if it's late and it's, it's off, if it's peak time, he tends to buy in one buying. If it's off-peak, he tends to buy in two. Because if it's reg-filled, he just buys in one, 'cause there's not as many dead chips around him. Blah, blah, blah. But anyway, that's what was his whole opinion of it, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I... I have no problem with people trying out things, testing out things. I think that's how everybody gets better, and we can figure out little nuances, and seeing if there's a way to get an extra edge. I'm all about it. In general... You know, I, I don't know if this is one of those things where it's like, all of a sudden, that becomes a... Like, double re-buy in the beginning is a bad way to play, and it's wrong to play that way. So... I still think this will be the standard winning way to really maximize your val- value. I can understand what he's saying, more regs, less dead chips, um, so maybe single re-buy. There, I'm sure there's a lot of math that could be involved to do the proper calculations, but really, what's gonna tell the story is, um... Somebody to do a full experiment, look at, you know, play several thousand games with the double re-buy, then play several thousand games not double re-buying, and at the same times, and really doing a full, kinda litmus test on, on really analyzing the one versus the other. For the time being, I definitely don't recommend it for anybody, 'cause I think it's just, again, an experiment at the moment. I'm happy to go through with people and really try to nail down if this is... Maybe the, a, a better way to play sometimes, but I think for the time being, I wouldn't get too overly excited about really trying to thinking that this is the new world of playing three rebis. But look, again, I'm happy to hear otherwise. You know, I don't think it's totally, you know, invalid, but... I thought it was worth talking about, since a lot of guys here are mainly playing three rebis, so... Um, and I know it's been discussed and even tried. So, just wanted to bring that up, but, all good. Alright, so let's keep, um, let's keep going through. And if anybody wants me to stop at any point, just let me know. Do a little ISO there, perfectly fine. Welcome, Simon.
Hey, you alright?
Alright, so we have a, uh, we've got a limper here for 100. What do you guys think here, Ace 10?
Also, okay.
Do a little ISO. What sizing do you guys think? What do you like?
250.
Yeah, we'll bet 250.
250, you could even go, even to 300, you know, 275-ish. I'd go maybe a little bit, but, you know, we have this one little bit loose guy to our left here in the blind. I, I might go to 275, regardless. If I'm dropping, I apologize. Sorry about that. So yeah, definitely ISO-ing here. What hands would you guys ISO with? I mean, Ace 10's kind of obvious, it's a solid hand.
Yeah, I, I do, I, I do different sizes against these people for different hands, like, this is a value hand. I mean, I'll probably ISO with Jack 10 suited Queen 10, stuff like that as well, but I'll ISO smaller. And I'll wait ISO here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, we can do it with a really a wide range of hands, typically, you know, as, and I've done a lot of reviews, I think, with everybody here. You know, I've talked a lot about the ISO-ing light against these limpers, especially at this stage. Where hand strength helps, doesn't matter too much, so even hands like Queen 9, Queen 10, perfectly fine. Even Ace reg is okay, like, even like Ace 4, Ace 5. Um, it's nice to have a hand to fall back on, um, so that when you hit, you know, you're pretty confident. But, um, even without having a great hand, the premise still applies of ISO-ing. He'll most likely call a raise if we raise it up to 275, 300. That's fine, we get the play in position, hopefully he checks, we c-bet, and take it down. And when we typically make a c-bet, it's not gonna be for a very large amount either, since we've already shown aggression. Uh, most Broadway sixes plus Ace 2 suited, Ace cutoff. Limping behind, I guess, can be okay. You know, if you're at like 2550, there's a lot more hands I, I would limp behind. When you start getting into 50/100, I feel like there's a lot of incentive for players to start then shoving all in and raising because of all, what seems to be a lot of dead chips in there. So I, when we start getting to 50/100 and 75/150, even with hands that play well in a multi-way pot, you might not even get to that multi-way pot. So I usually take the line of being a little bit more aggressive. If I'm in the small blind, sure, I will just limp in with a lot of hands. But we're in position here, um... So I'm most likely gonna be ISO-ing even with, you know, suited connectors. I have 6/7 suited, I'm fine with putting in an ISO raise. You know, the, the idea, um, still applies of taking the aggressive route, so... You want a little bit bigger, 350? That's okay, I, I don't, I don't mind that. 'Cause we, like you said, or like we were saying, we probably get him to call, so if he's gonna call, I don't mind getting more value from him. And we actually hit our ace, which is nice. I would probably value bet here like 375-ish. Anybody think that's too small?
No, that's fine. Want him to call as light as possible, really.
Yeah, you know, if he's got a jack, don't wanna scare him off, if he's got something like King-Jack or something like that. You know, betting too big might scare that hand off, so, that's what we're looking to get value from. I mean, if he's got an ace, he's probably gonna call regardless of what we bet, but we're also looking to get value from a jack. Nice, eh, looks like he didn't hit anything, so, good stuff there. But, uh, you know, I pointed out that hand, 'cause I just, you know, I also wanna say that we don't have to have a hand as strong as Ace 10 to ISO there. It can be a lot of hands. And I think we can do the same here, put in a raise, perfectly fine. What do you guys do here, c-bet or check behind? We gotta vote for c-betting? Yeah, yeah, versus a guy that limp calls, you know, this is a pretty juicy board, but that doesn't mean he has to sit there with, you know, Jack 10, or, you know, a king, or anything like that. He's gonna have a lot of slop in his, in his range. So just c-bet, take it down now. Yep, 350 to 400 I like. I don't think we need to go much bigger to get him to fold out where we want him to fold. About half-pot, it's fine, maybe go a little bit less. He calls on that board, a flush completes. I think I'm most likely, uh... Gonna be taking the more passive route now and checking behind, yep. That's not a bad river, give you a little bit more confidence. Assume he doesn't have a queen. What do you guys think about that bet sizing, 600? Too small, too big? Just right?
Yeah, I like it. Probably there's another queen, you can get him to try and call light with a king, or, or even a flush if he checked back on the turn with it.
Yeah, I just think his range is not strong enough to call a big bet, though.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, that's about like 30%, but I think, I think you're gonna get a lot of calls from Ace-X hands, you know, just Ace-high hands, so...
I agree with Pat there, he, he knows he's got a queen when he checked John, but I don't think this kind of person's ever checking a queen, so, on the river.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. We're, uh, we're good with that sizing, so hopefully he has an ace or something like that. Or a flush that he played about as passive as it can get. Uh, or I guess he was planning on probably check raise with you, yeah, probably check raise the turn. I forgot, yeah. So... I can dig that. What do you guys like here? This is kind of tricky. We got King-Queen, a lot of chips in the pot here from some limpers. The guy that limped is, limped initially, is playing 10-6. That's interesting, with less than 10 big blinds. What do you guys think here? Limp, raise? Just don't say fold?
I just make a copy, uh...
Uh, Pat, you said limper was on 20 and 5 last hand? Okay. Sometimes my, uh... Sometimes when the stats change, I forget where they were.
I prefer a raise first. And you could raise it like... 600 or something.
That's a direction I was leaning in, you know, you don't have to, like, I wanna get into an isolated pot, essentially all-in with that guy for 1100, or whatever he's got, 1200. I don't think we need to raise it to 1200 to accomplish that, raise like half his stack or more to, uh, to get into an isolated pot. Hopefully, we get, we get those other guys to fold, maybe they will, maybe they won't. You know, there is a little bit of risk there, but I, I think I like the more aggressive route. I mean, you could limp, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I'm not necessarily a huge fan, though, of being in a multi-way pot with King-Queen, to be honest with you. Um, you know, like a five-way pot here. You don't expect...
I don't expect, I don't expect a lot of folds off the people who have limped behind, even when you're ISOed to 6, because... Look at him, 42, 32.
They, I mean, they are definitely...
Unless that guy does limp jam.
They, they are definitely loose, um...
And I expect that King-Queen's a bit doing pretty well if, if we get a king or a queen against these kind of people.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I really wouldn't mind still going between 6 and 700 here. And really try to get into an isolated pot there. I, I just think there's so much value with the size of that pot. I mean, even if you raise to 700, you know, the pot's about 700. You know, so it doesn't have to work that often, and we're only gonna have to call 400 more all-in. It's a pretty good value play, in my opinion, to, uh, to try to pick up these chips rather than play it passively, and, you know, who knows, even if you hit a king or queen on a flop, you could be in a lot of trouble in this multi-way pot. So, I don't wanna get in that spot either. Um, I, I think there is some risk, but I would probably lean more towards the ISO-ing. You know, I'm not saying I'm 100% right here, but I think that'd be probably my play, rather than get into a multi-way situation. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I agree.
So let's see what happens. So you did limp in to see it. And I think this will be an easy board to get away from. And just let it go, so we don't get to see what he actually limped with. So, yeah, if that was me, probably I, uh... I'd be a little bit aggressive there. There's a lot of hands I would limp in there instead of raising. I think King-Queen's good enough. Maybe like a King-Jack, King-Jack suited type of range, I, I would do. Jack-10, Queen-10, those types of hands, I would probably just limp in. Alright. Is this a new guy at the table? Card Anus, that's a hell of a name. You know, we could, if these... Like, these are spots we could look to open up here. This Vendy, I think his stats probably changed, but it's only one guy. Um, looks like we have some pretty tight players overall. This guy isn't the tightest in the world, but we'd be in position on him. Um, so, actually, hold on real quick. So raise, if he was indeed a 10, I would expect him to be limping in. He wasn't a 10-6, um, that's a little bit deceiving, kinda the disadvantage of having my stats change based upon the stack sizes. So when you have fish, um... You're not gonna get 100% accuracy when their stats change, it's more for the regs, since we typically have a lot of hands on them. Um, yep, so 20 and 5, or whatever, we get much more value from trying to ISO him because of our hand strike. Yep, I agree. I agree. Um... You guys know me, looking to always pick up chips where we can. Might not be a bad spot to open up here. We got two regs here, this guy is definitely a little bit on the looser side, we're not really coming from a steel spot, though. I would look to put in a raise here. Maybe for the guys who won't, haven't done any hand history reviews with me yet. What I'm looking for here is the fact that we've got some pretty tight players, we most likely will not be playing post-flop. Um, there is a chance we might versus this guy, but we're looking to exploit stats, even if this guy does call and just flat here. I really don't mind playing in position, I think there's a lot of value to simply playing in position, regardless of our hand, we have a hand that can play okay, but, um... The fact that we have regs here, they're not gonna flat, post-flop hands aren't gonna matter too much, uh, I'd like to do a min-raise there. Um, Ace 8, uh, I would probably do the same thing, kinda looking at the stacks and the s- stats of the players. You know, we don't have to raise-call anybody, really. Even this guy with nine big blinds. Depending on what we think about his range, we don't even have to raise-call him if we don't, if we think that he's only three-bet shoving a range that crushes Ace 8. Um, there could be some pocket pairs in there that we'll be doing okay against. So maybe that's one guy we might wanna call, but the rest of them, if they three-bet, we can get away from it. Anybody agree, disagree with opening up there, for kinda the same reason, we got reg, reg, reg. This guy, while these maybe aren't his true stats for the whole game, it does show what, maybe how he starts trending when he gets a little bit shorter. He does tighten up a little bit. Even if he does just decide to flat, I think that's good for us, there's a lot of value to that. What do you guys think? Agree, disagree, think I'm nuts? Here's the reason about rag aces. The premise, again, is not necessarily that I'm gonna be cau- like, if I had Ace Deuce or something, I would still be fine with opening. I would just simply raise-fold versus these stacks. Um, if I had four, three or four guys here that had like 1500 stacks, I probably wouldn't look to open up many rag aces, and especially look to call them off. Um, but with the stack sizes here, I don't expect too many three-bets with an ultra-wide range, given from where we're opening from. And the fact that we have Ace 8, there's actually, just by the distribution of hands, there's a high likelihood we simply have the best hand at the table. It's likely no one else has an ace, and we most likely, like I said, have the best hand. If somebody three-bets you, you can probably assume your hand's not doing very well, so... I don't necessarily mind opening with rag aces when I'm not gonna call all-ins with them. Or play post-flop. And we can just let that go, no ISO-ing there. People not trying to restill later, our position's too early for them to do that. Exactly. Um, people expect you, you know, about my whole strategy of looking at stats, raising with any two cards sometimes if we're not gonna play post-flop. You know, when guys look to three-bet you, it's typically... When you're opening from positions that they expect you to open from. The button, the small blind, the cutoff. You know, that's when guys typically get aggressive. They're not really getting aggressive versus you're under the gun or middle position open. So, just something to kinda keep in the back of your mind. Again, this is a hand I would open if it was folded to us, but we can't do anything now. And we have a guy that just came to the table. I would not open in an unknown spot. Looks like, even though you probably don't know this yet, it seems like he's gonna be a lot of fun to play, with him on your left, playing 72/11. I'm sure you'll enjoy that. Let me guess, he's gonna call. What a surprise. And we get a little bit of a squeeze here. What do you guys think? What would you do with Ace-Jack in this spot?
Yeah, same, I agree.
Anybody vote to four-bet shove?
I haven't seen you do that at all, yeah, um...
Just not beating much of his range, though.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would fold without any information, um... Yeah, I would fold without any information to tell us otherwise. You know, if you don't have, you know, he might be doing this a little bit light. Maybe, maybe not, oh, I don't know, we haven't really seen his hands from the previous, you know, hands from this game, so... He does look to be a little bit more on the aggressive side, looser side, but that's fine in this spot. If I don't know 100% what he's doing this with, if I don't know he's capable of doing this with a wide range, like Broadways and Small Pockets and stuff like that, as essentially a bluff, I'm just gonna get out of the way here. You only wanna make these types of aggressive lighter four-bet shoves when you have some specific information. So, of course, this guy flats, let's, let's see what he did, let's see if we get to see a showdown. He bet pretty big on that board, so most likely some big pockets. What do you guys do here, they say?
Ship in.
Yeah, just ship it in. Uh, Fluba, you said the Ace 7, you would shove in free? Oh, you know what, I actually, I'm sorry, I think I missed that. Um, I didn't realize. What do you guys think about that? Would you guys ship this in here? Thanks for pointing that out, I missed that. What do you guys think? We've got a no, a no. Small raise, hope for callers, shove-flop? Okay, I think this is a good, good conversation. So, I, I do think that there's, uh, two ways to play this. I, I don't know why I didn't think to shove free, so I'm, I'm glad you, uh, you pointed that out. In terms of shoving...
You only had like three or four hands on this guy, though, at the minute.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, you probably only have a handful of hands, but if you're, if you have, like, depending on how many tables are up, let's just assume you have one table up, okay? Uh, we'll treat this as we're in a vacuum here. You've seen him flat your raise, then he flat, you know, he flooded this guy's squeeze. That might tell you a lot of what you need to know in that one hand, plus the fact he's limped here, and I think he limped in another hand as well. So that might start giving you an idea, even if he's played like four or five hands and he's got, you know, an 80% open, you know, 80% of the hands he's playing, it'll give you a good idea of, this guy's pretty loose. So... There are, uh, shoving is fine, the pot's 975, usually, like I said, when I'm thinking about shoving all-in with annies and limpers, I typically want the pot to be 27, uh, 20% of my stack. Uh, or more, 20% of our stack would be like 760. So, the pot is perfectly fine to shove, so I don't want you to think that it's an, an over-shove. Losing me on my mic, that's wonderful. So what I was saying was, the, the pot is greater than 20% of our stack, so... We, we're okay to shove all-in here. Now, what Pat said was... Which is a really cool play that I like to, to make as well. I probably don't do it all the time, uh, but it's fun to do, kinda when you, sometimes when you remember to do it. Is against these guys that are this loose, raise to like... What do you think, Pat? You would raise to even like 1,000?
Hold on, uh, how much chips has he left on the, uh?
He's got 7,800. See, let me say real quick, I'm not looking to play this hand normally, like, oh, I'm just gonna raise 3 or 4X to, or 3X because it's a, it's a limper. We don't need to balance our range, first of all, versus this guy.
How much does a small blind have, like 6,000, or am I misreading?
Uh, sorry, small blind, he's got 4K.
4K, uh, probably make it something like 900-ish, and shove pretty much any flop if checked to you. But, and I do expect a lot of check from this kind of player, small blind.
Um, well, I, I don't know if the small blind's gonna call 1K rate, I'm more looking at the guy who limped initially. I mean, if this guy comes along as well for 1K, that's, certainly puts you in an interesting spot. But I think that, I, I do like the play here, I, I would make it 1,000, 1,100, so that if he wants to flat there, hey, by all means, I'm gonna shove every single flop. Um, you know, what would the pot be, 1,000, 2,000, like 2,500, 2,600? We'll have about 2,800 left behind or so, give or take. So, kinda perfect to just shove all-in there. Um, so I like that play, I like doing that play a lot. You can do that play even with three-betting. You know, somebody raises, instead of three-bet shoving all-in, three-bet like half of your stack, get him to call, shove any flop, and then maybe you get some value from guys who are capable of calling a, a three-bet that's not at all-in. So there's definitely some value there versus these really, really fishy players. So I like that play, I, I would have no problem with that, and I have no problem with a shove. You can debate on what has more value, um, sometimes raise it to 1,000 might have more value, you might get some extra calls.
But I gotta admit, this player, it seems to work better in entities, it still pays you off in 180s, but it, it, to me, it looks like it's working better in the entities, to be honest.
Well, I, I think it's more a player-based, regardless of, I would... well I I think it's more a player based regardless of I would do this in a nine man game nine man game you're not gonna be as deep obviously but concept still applies you know let's say you're at fifty-one hundred and you have two K and a limper has two K or something like I'm just throwing out numbers you know we're not gonna raise to a thousand maybe we just raise to like five hundred instead of shoving all in and get that guy to call five hundred and then shove so the concept still applies regardless of game we're looking to exploit the opponent um and I so I kind of like that here to do that so I would have no problem with that play um yeah you have to shove absolutely any if you're doing that play you're shoving any flop because he's gonna miss two thirds of the time so there's tons of value there um so shove any flop or just shove pre flop that'd have been fine too so Felipe thanks for stopping me on that hand I think I might not have noticed the pot size versus our stack well if you hit a monster sure you know if you if you flop like you know ace ace seven or ace ace whatever yeah we'll have to let him catch up but regardless of hitting one of those rarer flops you know just shipping it right the Carlos the point was is that if if we raise to a thousand we might get more calls than we get if we shove and then by the fact of getting him to fold in the flop we get some extra value from those calls who's he would call a pre flop yeah so I'm not necessarily I mean I don't really necessarily look for a call in these spots it's more of a risk reward type of thing of you know we have a good enough hand he's limping a wide enough range huge pot to pick up we can do that with a shove where we most likely have the best hand um and I don't mind getting folds and I don't mind doing what Pat said so kind of two ways to approach that I like both of them so good stuff there and you can actually do the same thing here the probably what I I don't think I would do the same thing here hold on you say you wanna look at the flop uh let's take a look at the flop yeah and this would be a good flop to shove you know let's say you raised a thousand he called a thousand the pots whatever it is that's a good flop to shove actually you're saying you would bet out here you could with these guys that are just ultra loose they may not even be folding five hands with like a five in them they're not folding flush draw they're not folding a queen I guess you could I'm not a huge fan versus really loose opponents like this you can start getting into double barrel mode but meh I usually don't look to get too fancy with these guys post flop yeah so it puts us in a really tricky spot out of position versus a guy who's probably never folding and here I would probably look to just shove here and not make that play that we just spoke about only because I think this guy's probably capable of calling as well and this guy might call even if we raised to like a thousand or something like that so I don't necessarily want to do this in a multi-way pot um since this guy now is the initial limper so it's a little bit trickier blinds are up a little bit more I I would just shove here make life easier on yourself good good so now we're in post ante mode this is definitely a time where we want to be ramping up our aggression picking up spots where we can now unfortunately that's gonna be very very difficult to use that opening wide type of strategy because this guy's gonna be calling us a ton and I have no problem when he's in the blinds but that obviously means we're just on the button every every other time he's gonna be to our left and in position so I would just open up hands that typically flop well or have some showdown value yeah yeah he's probably um he's on the more aggressive side anything greater than ten percent three bet versus steel is typically a little bit more aggressive so he's probably three betting your wide your opens in late position what do you guys think about an iso here or even an all in anybody for or against it
if you want to actually just shove though if I don't
yeah uh again the smaller iso raise is gonna be tricky with this guy um you could you could shove um sorry so he's not a hundred percent like three three uh
he's the one who was letting him before
yeah he was limping before he's limping a wide range my again the stats are changing based upon the stack sizes which you need more hands to start getting a better sample um of how they're truly gonna play I don't mind a shove here raising is committing the initial emperor yeah let me try to move that so we can see that better sorry I but I don't want to raise small
he's not committed anywhere because he's just limped to see flop so he doesn't feel committed even if he's got half his stacking
yeah I I would be fine with just shoving here uh if you wanted to make that play we do have four guys left behind us so it's kind of on the marginal side with your stack so I don't mind a fold I don't mind a shove either eh maybe like ace eight suited ace nine all you know those hands I'd start being a little bit more comfortable with meh so I wouldn't mind a shove there guys so I wouldn't mind it the other thing about deuces a lot of kind of tricky hands in this that might seem easy on the surface but this this guy starts making life a little bit interesting what would you guys do here anybody opening yeah the min raise fold is gonna be perfectly fine the question is do we want to min raise this there's no three betting from this guy this guy's flattening like almost a hundred percent obviously seventy-two percent of the time probably let's see fold the C bet he's folded one time out of three flops so alright we got we got a call please C bet we get a call that's it's it's what I'm concerned about you know
I just fold pre and save my chips
yeah that's that's the concern here is like we know we're gonna be playing post flop at a position versus a guy who's a calling station and a big stack that's I'm not a huge huge fan there I mean I would open up I would look to more open up hands that flop well so that when we do hit our hand we really we can uh we can stack off for pure value uh I can't wait for a three bet pre flop if it were falling yeah we have to give up after the flop so just I would be careful with that guy alright Pat see you later thanks for jumping in um so we get a guy playing forty-two twenty-one he opens from early position with sixteen
he's just been jamming last time so I don't know what this means like he jammed fifteen and then at the other levels at the other levels I don't know what this means
to lose strength
so his his early position opening is sixteen percent over thirty-seven hands what do you guys think let ace jack go
yeah
if you've seen him shovel up before and then all of a sudden he raises um I don't mind folding there that can be fine if you think that that's representing strength that's fine you have good reason a little bit short uh why'd you limp in
he's sat out he's sat out he can play it through please play the hand through he just keeps my stats down on people's hoods and I just limp it because he folds it anyways
wait what he folded
what was that
no no he's sat out so if I limp it gives me the chips doesn't it
I
he's he's sat over here
okay
you get that he's sat out
yeah 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 yeah
so if I limp it gives me the pot anyway it just doesn't mean that I'm looking as aggressive on my hood
okay okay fair enough
that was the thing I learned off littler about four years ago if you don't wanna leave you wanna look a bit more pattern in people's hoods then you're not raising every small blind then are you you just cause that won't look as a steal will it on a hood then
that's that's fine it's a good it's a good thought
there you go it's just something that was in my head for nine months I just still do it if they're set out I don't bother to raise I just limp it because it gives you the chips
yeah cool fair enough what do you guys think here a five eight suited on the button
he should stay beside out as well
is he sitting out still right
yeah
oh we we have to shove we have to shove here
he's a reg Niko
yeah he he's a reg but you wanna know what we 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 know we have a guy sitting out we should have a good amount of fold equity yes you know he he probably knows the correct range to call with but I don't think we can get away from a fold uh from a shove here because you know what we we have to pick up chips before these blinds come back around I'd rather shove here through essentially one person
yeah
um rather than pick up a half decent hand and have to shove through three or four or five people so you know maybe you want to fold the absolute bottom of your range um yeah I I agree with you that even if he was in the hand we could shove but uh you know I we need to shove regardless maybe you want to fold the absolute absolute bottom of your range even though I'm still inclined to shove close to any two because you know he's capable of calling wider but uh yeah I think we definitely have to shove there so that's that's a missed spot yeah it would've been nice to shove there uh looks like he's he's back he woke back up and we can let it go looks like we're at the shove that's nice alright so the stats haven't changed yet hopefully they will shortly but it looks like we're at a different table so that's delightful anytime the stats want to change we'll go without it for a little bit you got tens somehow getting it in nice flop what do you guys think here little iso would you just call would you raise I would probably just call given the stacks of the players behind and the size of his shove you know if his shove was like twelve hundred I would probably obviously raise but uh given the sizing I think we can just call there is everybody in favor anybody else fold or everybody in favor of raising or calling
yeah cool just a bit dodgy because if you call then Sandrita's might call behind but you got position so you could just bet any flop pretty much
yeah yeah I mean look we don't have the stats hopefully they change soon that's why hold a manager being very uh temperamental um yeah I guess if you knew something about the blinds like oh my god all you know they're ultra aggressive but you just got moved to this table you probably don't know much about them I'm not sure
it's the sizing though put in it the sizing should go
yeah I prefer to flat though
yeah I I think uh
if you re-raise then it's awkward if they jam on you and then it's like uh
yeah I I can't imagine them with again without them having reason like the only reason that you would raise here I I imagine we could I mean the only reason you want to raise is because you think if you call these guys are gonna you know three bed squeeze a much wider range than they would if you raised I don't know if that's really ever gonna be the case in these spots so just flattening is perfectly fine there see it's a good fold there since yeah he's gay now you would have split the pot
what's the stats
the stats change it no damn it we can get Pat's stats and then try to make fun of him while he's not here uh Sergio that that's a really good point I agree with that you know for the most part I agree with that you know five big blinds people usually have some fold equity so they'll still want to shove wider three big blinds they have no fold equity so they'll shove a good hand I agree with that but still in that spot there's no way he's not shoving connecting hands and stuff like that so I I agree with that to a point but he's also there's also a lot of hands he's gonna be shoving still um okay so we opened here we get flats definitely C betting this board good I like the sizing I think it's perfectly fine and we can just get rid of it you're checking behind why are you checking behind on that board gotcha yeah yeah sorry the stats might be screwing people up I'm not sure I'm not exactly sure why these stats are not changing but yeah it's not him so we can't go on stats pretty at at the moment we just can't go on stats because they haven't changed um in general though
still a good C bet spot
yeah it's a good C bet spot regardless you know it's a good board to C bet so if we're just looking at spots regardless of stats click two times on show play if I show players click two times there there's a ninety-four percent chance that this hold a manager will freeze I've done it before I don't know what's going on
yeah I don't think big big bad bluff ever flaps there anyway
yeah yeah if he if he's flattening there he's got aces kings something like that alright so we get a flat here again we don't have these player stats let me say one thing let's the fact that this guy's gonna flat probably tells us that he is on the looser side um against these guys I don't make my normal small uh small blind raise like obviously we could shove here I understand you're probably raising to induce that's most likely what you're probably trying to do right I would do it with a bigger raise so that if you're up against the loose player that might be I mean maybe you don't know he's capable of flattening fine if you think that like if he is playing like thirty fifteen or some something like that I might actually go to three excuse me three X so it's kind of like that same concept that we talked about before about instead of shoving maybe make a bigger raise get him committed without being committed so to say so to speak um
but that's not true that statement though I don't with that because I do raise with
yeah
worse with less than them blinds
yeah
it's not like I only raise ace king god aces and kings
yeah we've we've talked about that before we're raised we're raising with a wide range of hands not just you know premiums so um if if this was a reg you could even raise for the reasons we talked about before but let's just speak about this situation as it is you're raising against this guy I would probably go to three X to prevent him from just flattening so that if he does want to flat the pot's bigger and we can probably shove a lot of flops and but since the pot since raising is a little bit bigger it might force him to say well if I want to play this hand I probably have to shove all in rather than make a slightly bigger than min raise like two point two
I usually make two point five in the small blind anyway so I don't there must be a reason why I've made a smaller raise here I don't know the reason why but
see what's nice here is if you do make this like two K twenty-four hundred something like that
yeah
um you could easily shove flops here it's a little bit nasty to shove a flop but we'll have to C bet I would probably even C bet a little bit smaller even at half pot but that's that's probably my play there
I'd probably bet that size because there's a lot of turn cards I can just ship it in there anyway
right
so that that puts my nothing up there I can just jam the My nothing up pot there, I can just jam the turn if I bet, so, two K on the flop.
Yeah, you could do that if he just flats. I'd be concerned if he just flats. Uh, we get quite committed.
I don't know what starts out. There must be a reason why I raise smaller.
But, uh, but yeah, i- in general, regardless, you know, I think it just has an overarching. Thought or strategy of playing against like loose guys in the blinds, when you could easily shove, but if you want that potentially some extra value. Raise to like three X or three point five. You know you're committed. Try to get them committed without being committed, like thinking that they're gonna call an all in. And get the value from those calls and then ship any flop. So we'll, we'll keep it rolling here. And. Alright, so we get a shove. I wish we had these friggin' stats. Let me do this.
Um, I guess I can just look at what tax bank has, what stats?
Yeah, let's see what he's got since.
Uh, the huds doing that change?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Called tax, what's he called? Tax? Bank.
Uh, sorry. Tax bank. So, so we'll assume he's a reg, maybe just opening up a normal range here. A little bigger.
It's not quite a reg, but he's.
What do you, what do you guys think with pocket fours in general? Well, let's, let's discuss it.
I don't mind a jam. Kind of weird opening size.
I know, I agree. It is a weird opening size.
He has twenty-seven seventeen, um, steals thirty-seven, cut off thirty-seven, bottom fifty. Small one thirty-three.
So. There's two thoughts to this. He's certainly probably opening wide, right? Probably wide range.
Mm-hmm.
With that being said, how wide is he calling?
I don't, I don't think he's a kind of, he's not got that big a gap, so he's not, he's twenty-seven seventeen. It's not like he's twenty-seven three.
Right.
And I would assume they're more stationary than.
Right.
Actually, I do have a bit, quite a few games with this guy.
Right, so what I would say is, you know, just in general, my, my thoughts are. You know, when you're gonna three bet somebody, while they might be wa- have a wide opening, we also need to assume we have a lot of fold equity. To justify these kind of marginal three bets. Um, because if they open wide, but also call wide. That's something we don't want either. We need certain hands to fold. You know, we want king, queen to be folding. You know, we need those hands, you know, like AC, we need those hands to be folding. If he's gonna call with those hands, then I actually probably wouldn't shove. Um, but if there is a disparity, you know, good disparity between his opening range versus calling range. Um, I, I like it. I think we have fold equity here. He's opening wide, so we should have it. What I'd say is just be sure that. You know, against those like really loose guys, I might widen my three bet value range, but I'm not necessarily three betting them two to, uh. It does have good equity if he, if he has a wide calling range, but I don't necessarily want, there's certain hands I don't. I, I think we need him to be folding out, um. Hands like king, jack and king, queen and ace seven, because. If he starts calling with that, with that wide of a range, then. We put ourselves in a little bit trickier spot. The, the three, let's just say, not that three bet shove would be bad, it just becomes a lot more marginal.
And he does have the stack as well, like, can call.
Yeah. So it's just something to keep in mind when making a little bit wider the three bets. Uh-oh, Pat opened up. What are we doing? Do it again?
It's bullshit, but I, I've not got a lot of information.
Yeah, I can imagine.
He's got a hand there, it looks like.
He's probably up enough. Do we wanna open up here? Hmm.
Uh, I don't like it.
Uh, we need to know the stats of the players. If this was a tight table, I'd have no problem with it. We have a short stack here, a shorter stack here. I'm more concerned about the seven K stack. The rest of the stats aren't, the stack sizes aren't bad for it actually. Cause they're probably only gonna be three betting with a range versus under, under the gun. That's pretty damn tight. Uh, it's fine to fold there. It's definitely a, a riskier play. So let's just see how this hand played out. Uh, this hut is really annoying me. Uh, getting an opportunity here. Hopefully we get to shove here. Think. Open up here. Uh, a little big, a little big, maybe.
Big. No, I, I, I stopped min raising.
Did you?
Cause it just, yeah, it just wasn't working out. Now I'm just playing so many flops and.
Okay.
I just changed it up. Not a lot, I changed it up to like two point one, two or something like that.
Uh, that, that's fine. You know what? I, I kinda misread the sizing of how big it was. I, that's not big. That's, that's fine.
Well, I've actually done the same. I found that people just kept flattening and.
I, I've looked at.
My steel stats have gone up. People just kinda play back more, so I just kinda put up my raise a bit.
I looked at that as like twenty-eight hundred and I thought it was a little bit bigger than maybe you needed to be. Twenty-six is fine. Um. Friggin' Pat here.
Well, this is his, um, go and go bullshit that I, I know he's doing, so.
Was, what did he say? Did he expect you to just flat here?
He expects me to fold though, I think, and he's got a monster out. He expects me to, yeah, he expects me to just flat and he can shove a flop. I don't know. He just does.
Guessing he's.
He expects me to fold a lot, I think.
Well, then. That isn't something we'll have to discuss in the next hand history review.
I didn't even know this handle, you know, but he, he expects me to fold a lot there. Cause he knows I can open fairly wide now, now there's only one stack I have to call.
So his, his attempt at like a meta game min three bet plus attempting blinds.
Probably whilst he's telling you he's got aces in chat or something like that.
Yeah, I, I think he, I think he was outthinking himself on that one.
Yeah, it does that to me now. Snap him with ten jack.
The thing is, it's like, I, I kinda wanna do the reverse of what he's thinking. Because if I had aces, I would, I would probably just wanna shove. Thinking that that play, if, like, if he thinks that play looks strong and he wants to get a fold.
I think he's just trying to mess.
I know, I think he is probably just trying to mess with you, but as long as he's not doing that too often, that's kinda just like.
None of it with anything I open there, so, no.
It's kinda just pissing away money. Uh, ba, 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 ba.
Be a bit dubious in that.
Yeah, I think we can call. I mean. In general, if it's a reg three betting there, I, I would call. Um, we don't, I don't have a lot of hands on him. I've only got ninety-one. You know, when he has this stack, he, uh, it's only over three hands. Yeah, so we, so we can't get an accurate. If, is he a reg? Um, I don't have a lot of hands on him.
I don't think so. I love all of my hands again, but.
We need about forty percent equity here. What do you, what do you guys think? Call, fold?
Yeah, if he's a reg and they can three bet west and that, but if he's like, I don't know, no ten to fold there.
Yeah, I.
Just cause it's just not worth it. Like, he might think he could be ahead, but a lot you'll find that he's just got like ace, ten plus or something. And you're just behind.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm kind of in the same boat. I'm kind of in the same boat, so. Yeah, he has ace ten. Like, usually when I'm making these calls, uh, you know, we have to have a, we have to have a good reason to think that he's capable.
I kinda thought that was like, like the lowest I can call with, really. I don't know.
I, I agree with you there. Um.
Cause obviously if I'm, if I, if I'm raising a lot from, I've got kind of a monster there for me.
Yeah. Yeah, I know how it feels, that happens to me sometimes, but if it's like. I think sometimes against tightknits, I use that mentality and then I just find they've actually got a hand, when I think, oh, they're probably. That you think that you notice that you're opening a lot, but they actually don't. They just wait.
Like, here's, here's, here's the thought process on that. If you're contemplating calling a three bet wider than you normally would have, you obviously have to have a reason. Your reason should t- should be that he's either three bet you several times before, you have history of him, you've seen him three bet other people in a similar spot. Like, you've start, you've seen him shove ace deuce from there, or like king tens, hands like that. You know, you, you've seen that happen, or you've seen a really high frequency of three bets. If, even if he is a reg. And, I mean, if he has like an outrageous three bet stat, but if he has like a seven three bet versus steel and you don't have a ton of history together. I gotta be honest, I would, I, I'm usually folding those marginal hands because I'm, eh, to call there. You need to be damn sure that they're shoving wide enough, and many times they're just simply not. Because you may think, well, I'm pretty aggressive, my stats are pretty wide. He probably sees that, ah, I wouldn't go down that route yet. You know, start to get a ha- hand history, uh, history with people. Start getting ra- you know, take notes on the ranges. It's one thing to have stats, it's another to actually see a hand. So if you see that he's capable of pulling some crap that Pat pulled, then by all means, you know, start calling wider. You know, whatever, four betting wider. Um, but until then, I do take the more conservative route. Because nothing can deplete your stack faster than calling off a large portion in a spot where you didn't have to. Good. Delightful.
How many? Oh, he is, he was probably short.
What do you guys think about king ten off here?
Well, I've just shown down jack nine as well. I don't think it's worth.
Yeah.
It widens the calling range on sixteen, jack nine, I think.
Yeah, I think maybe if you haven't played anything for a while, you can get away with it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, it's a bit optimistic.
Yeah, it's a, it's right on that marginal side. You just shoved, you just showed jack nine. Maybe that makes me lean towards, even though your jack nine was a perfectly fine shove. People, people just still.
Sevens don't call. I mean, didn't call before, but now they do.
I'm okay, I'm okay with folding there.
By hands like that, I only get comfortable, like, jamming if I'm all down to like sixteen K or fifteen K. I don't really like doing it if I'm over tens. I feel like I can, I've got another orbit to kind of get it in. King, queen, I'd obviously jam. King, jack, maybe.
Suit it probably. Nice, you gotta have decent stack and the stats are changing. This is happy days. Couple of hands aren't gonna hurt. And there we go. Good old ten, seven shove.
Supposed to be cause the buttons make a sway for you to open one.
Was that guy a reg? I mean, I have no hands on that guy.
No, no, he was just a run.
There you go. What do you guys think here? He has a sixty-three percent steel from the big blind. What do you guys think? We've got a call.
So is there a fold to three bets down there?
He, uh, he's got a zero percent fold to three bet, fold to three bet zero over one hand, so that doesn't tell us a lot.
He's a guy off the first table who was.
Yeah.
Like, said he had regish, but he was wide. He was loose.
Well, if he's got such a high steel percentage and he'll fold, like, you see some people do that and then they'll snap, pull you with like ten, king, ten and stuff.
Right.
So if you, if you think that they're gonna fold a lot to a jam, then I, I don't mind jamming him. Also, if it's some kind of bubble, like the final table bubble.
So whatever, we, whatever we wanna decide on whether we should flat or three bet. We obviously have to look at the frequency of which he's opening. If he's kind of in the middle, maybe we don't know, maybe he isn't stealing, maybe his. Stealing is only like thirty, forty percent. Um, I, I'd be fine with flattening. I think flattening with those middle type of hands. You know, maybe the connecting, even like jack tens. I think it's fine to flat and play in position and potentially, you know, float and do that. But you do that because you think that has a better, more value than three betting. Because you don't maybe, you don't, maybe you don't know his exact range or his range just isn't wide enough to three bet shove. Or three bet in general, uh, against his range. So you're kind of like right in the middle there. Um. But if he's very high frequency of opening, then we know that he's opening a ton of hands. So in that case. Three betting will, in general. Probably be a more valuable play. Of course, you know, it goes to, you know, what is he folding as well? But given that he's opening sixty-three, you know, he's stealing sixty-three percent of the time here, that should give us a good idea of. How wide he's opening. So three betting wide in general is a good play. Is flattening bad? I, I don't think flattening's bad and. And potentially, uh, floating flops and stuff like that. I, I would be okay with that. You're kind of.
I don't, I don't think he's like deep enough, really. Like, say you flat, pot's gonna grow, grow pretty quickly.
I mean, it definitely depends on what he decides to fire out on the flop. If he goes like two thirds to pot, then there's no way. You know, so there's a little bit more risk with that play, or maybe not necessarily more risk, but speculation, I guess I would say. Um. I agree. Most people don't double barrel. If he gets called there, he's giving up and we can s- we can bet on the turn small. So I don't mind floating at all. Um, if he fires big on the, on the flop though, then we probably have to get rid of it. Can we, you know, the other question is, can we three bet small, get away from a four bet, assuming his four bet range isn't gonna be anything wider? Could we make this like eighteen thousand? And fold to a four bet shove? Do we have to three bet shove? I agree. I don't think.
If he raises small, it's probably gonna put, he's gonna commit using.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out, the pot size and the, and the percentages.
Like, if he raised eighteen K, he would put in fifty more.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, so.
To call forty K and pretty big.
It's gonna be a huge pot. Yeah, we're gonna be getting good odds. So maybe if he had like sixty K, we could probably get away from that, uh, or more than sixty K. Um, probably more like seventy, now that I think about it. So three bet jam would be perfectly fine here. Flat, fine. He bets pretty big. And just, see, I think that's where you kind of have to fire out.
I'd probably fire out if I had nothing, you know, floating with nothing.
See, here's the thing. Uh, we have some showdown value, I agree. Um, we don't want him to potentially fire out on the river. We also wanna protect our hand in case he does have some overcards here.
He has like pot sized bet left.
He's got a pot sized bet left. You could ship it in. I mean, you could even bet. Ah, shit.
Yeah, his stat is.
See, that's, that's, that's why I don't really like that play, cause the pot's just growing and he could easily just jam the turn.
I mean.
We could just put him in here. I think we could just put him in here.
Why not, why not just, just shove the flop?
What, I what?
Have a good shot, bottom, bottom pair, um.
Shove the floor?
You know, I think, yeah. Mostly bad. He has.
Cause I get called by ten and a queen and I get everything else to fold.
We got called by better hands, but, uh, the thing is, the board is kind of dangerous for us, even if we're ahead. Um, my idea is, um. Let's say he has like a random bro, like a king or something like that. There's, there's a bunch of. Cards that, that can come on, on the turn that, you know, he can either, uh, barrel or pick some, pick some outs and, and try to buy the turn. And if he bats the turn, we're gonna have to fold a lot here, so.
Bet on the turn has to be a jam, though, don't you think? If he's betting the turn.
I think he only bets on the, he bets on the turn has to be a jam and the jam obviously indicates that he has the hand. So calling on the flop. You know, we, we can get a lot of, we can. You know.
Definitely gets more information on the fact that he's gonna, he's gonna jam the turn with a hand and I can't see him jamming as a complete bluff.
Right, right. Yeah, we'll know exactly. We'll be able to just take it away on the turn. I, I'm fine with even jamming the turn here, cause if you bet like twelve thousand and he jams. It's gonna be a pretty damn big pot. With a pair and you've still got some outs. Without even going through the percentages though, you could just jam here. He does have king, jack. So his hand wasn't bad. Be interesting to see if, I would really like to know if he would've called your shove. Three.
Yeah, I think if he's gonna call, he should be, well, he just shoved himself on the turn.
No, I mean, pre-flop, if he would've three bet.
Oh, pre-flop, mm.
That'd be good information to know.
Depends how many you use to three bet, so.
Yeah, so.
So like, I don't, I don't mind that float play if he bets less, but it's such a big, almost pot-sized bet.
Yeah, that was my concern, was that if he fires out big and obviously if we miss that, then, you know, we have to get, get rid of it. If a guy is, has a high opening stealing frequency, I'm usually inclined to even three bet with those middle, middle of the road hands than the flat. But accordingly, um, did you do it again?
Yeah.
These people need to wake up.
Just late at night or something. He's just falling asleep.
Must be. Alright, we got Mr. Asquith here. So the fireworks should begin. Oh, that's always nice.
So once they do forward around.
Yeah, hopefully the stats will change, Jesus. There we go.
Just care for you, Ben.
Yeah, I did a review with Kev the other day and just going through the games with him and, you know, he definitely has a different feel for the game for sure. You know, he, he three bets and four bets lighter and more aggressive than, than most.
Crazy sometimes.
But he did in a lot of good spots and it made sense. You know, it's not something that I would probably advise in a coaching session by any means. But, you know, he's got a good feel for it.
Yeah, he does some crazy moves in MTTs.
Yeah, that's what I figured, like, he kind of brings his MTT game into the one eighties a little bit, naturally. Um, what do you guys think here? No information on this guy, he does one of these bad boys.
If it was Pat, you know what to do.
Yeah, it's Pat, you know. Shit, I'd probably just call him and let Pat flop off the flop. Yeah, I actually don't think we can fold. You know, just in case we do hit something half decent here.
Yeah, I think just flat and then. What else is he doing that with?
That's the thing, we don't know. Like, we can make all the assumptions in the world, we just don't know. Um, you know.
It's gonna end. Sorry.
Now, as I say, is it aces? You know, is this guy doing this with aces? I don't know. You know, I don't want to assume either way. I think flattening is perfectly fine. So he had Ace-Jack. Yeah, so, you know, weird sizing, but. Yeah, with random guys, they do such, again, random shit that sometimes you never know what they're gonna do, but. The question is though, is it a bad hand? Uh, saw that one coming.
Could have probably four bet.
I have to try.
You, you could have, you know what, if you would have four bet there, I wouldn't have blamed you.
I just thought it was too early, so. I think I just got back.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Depends if you know who Kev is, though, like, this is crazy sometimes.
I, I, uh, wait, what's this?
I've seen him like four bet, like, three bet jam people with like five deuce and stuff, like coming up to final tables.
Yeah, I did the review with him the other day and he, he opened and he expected a guy to three bet wide, he, it was like ten-six and he four bet jammed and I was like, well, makes sense. Yeah, but it didn't make sense in why he did it. Risky maybe, but it made sense.
He doesn't play with a HUD either, do you know that?
Yeah, I know, I started talking to him about that and getting the HUD set up.
He literally just, like, follows what people are doing rather than using HUD.
Yeah, I, I know a lot of, I know several really good MTT players that don't use HUD, they just play situations.
Supposedly they're really good live plays.
Yeah, well, did anyone know the guy Andres Soprano? He, uh, he does, he did videos for Blue Fire, he's won several million live. Um, he doesn't use a HUD, um. I did a, I was in a review session with him and it's pretty cool to do a review session with him because he, um, you know, I would talk about HUD stuff and, you know, he, he would just say, no, 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 he would just talk about situations and what this guy's thinking and it was pretty cool to kind of, you know, for a really long time, I never played with a HUD. That was the, from the full tilt days, you didn't really need one, games were much easier. Um, so most of my volume was done without a HUD. I personally think it's important now and if you use correctly, you can get a big edge. But, um, I can definitely understand why, you know, there's a bunch of really good MTT guys that don't.
Yeah. Suppose if they're used to that then.
Yeah.
But there are times when you're playing one eighties, when you see a reg do something, you kind of don't bother looking at, like, you don't take into account the stats, you just know that they're regs and you know what they're thinking, so you can make a decision.
Exactly. Um, I think we can open King-Jack here. What do you guys think?
Yeah. And then just call off Stevie and Loreno.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, you know, we can get rid, you know, fold to probably these guys. Um, but yeah, we'll have to call off the rest of them. No big deal. I would definitely open there though.
To see if you picked, if you're chip leader.
Yeah, you were the chip leader. Uh, I mean, the blind stacks, they could do a little bit of damage to us, but we're sitting pretty comfortable right now. You know, it's one of those situations where even if you lose, you're fine, but if, if they go all in and you win, you've just, you're putting yourself really into, you know, in that, that really top level category of chips to keep giving yourself a solid chance at finishing in first.
Also, they go on the left, this dog's just mega short and they're probably just trying to move up.
You're absolutely right. I mean, I would be, I would even just keep being aggressive here. You're absolutely right with the short stack there. Guys probably aren't gonna do squat. You're the big stack, you can open up. Maybe you don't want to open up any two, just in case you have the showdown or whatever, but open up a, definitely open up King ten if not for that reason alone. Yep, I agree. Got a little gun shy.
Yeah, after, I use three betting every time, it's kind of, unless I did it, every open I did a three bet, so.
Well, so.
You know, you'd be doing it on the other table as well.
So far, what, we saw one three bet though, right? So far?
No, but I mean, like, I had him on, I have him on other tables. He's got like, um, twenty-five percent re-steal and about one meat, so a lot more.
Yeah.
See, if I'm getting three bet half the time, I need to.
Yeah, I mean, it means, it means a couple of things. You, when you're getting three bet a lot, it means you have several options. One, you can just simply tighten up, like you've been doing. You know, you tighten up, fine. Um, the other thing you could do is four bet shove wider.
Yeah.
And simp, or if it's a three bet shove from him, widen your value calling range.
Uh huh.
Typically, those are a little bit more difficult because you're not, maybe not used to calling off so wide, it, it might feel weird or spewy. But if you know, if a guy is really three betting you thirty, forty percent of the time, which Kev is, like, he's definitely on the upper echelon of aggressive regs, fine. Um, most guys aren't gonna be doing that. But there are a few that do and, you know, adapting, I mean, the reason we've talked so much about, you know, make this play, you know, exploit these stats, exploit this, is because we're trying to adapt to what normal people do. Well, he's definitely hit in the abnormal three betting range statistics, so we just have to adapt again. So that means four betting wide. You know, because he'll do this to you all day. You four bet wide, who knows what he does the next time?
If you four bet there, would you jam or? So jam is really the only thing.
Right. You, you don't want a light five bet like that, no, I'm just kidding. You, uh, yeah, you probably have.
Cause he knows what you're thinking.
And then this guy did it, right? Oh no, he just flat, sorry.
Yeah, this guy's a, he was a little slow, so he's, he's. It's gonna be fun to do.
I thought he was gonna stop and go, but he just checked. And he check raised here. Alright. Alright, we could maybe check behind if we were afraid of what he's opening. I don't know. The guy's definitely the looser side, loose passive. Eh, not loose passive, but, um. Yeah, I guess a fold is fine there actually with his stats. Let's see here. So he's getting two point one to one. Yeah, he's probably got a call there.
So I wouldn't mind opening, considering that position.
It'd be okay. I'm not, I wasn't a huge fan of his stack.
Yeah, well, that's the reason why. I've got a caller being blind, when he.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of his stack. It wouldn't be bad. I like that, glad you ISOed there. Um, against this guy, I would just ship this in here. You know, if, if he is that kind of, of a looser player, um, twenty percent three bet versus steel, I mean, there's probably not a ton of stats actually. Eh, half the time, whatever. Um, if, if I think that this guy's even somewhat loose, I'd probably just take the unexploitable route and shove all in. I don't want him to flat potentially. So we get a fold, that's good. In general though, I'd probably just shove. I agree with that. Yeah, the tighter guys, we can get away with the raise-fold stuff. Um, you know, I would open here. I, I would. Um, I know you're probably afraid of Kev, three betting you again. The stacks are actually okay in terms of these guys.
Yeah.
Because if they shove, we can still get away. They should only three bet shove. Actually, he flatted us last time. Eh.
Yeah, but I think he had a monster.
Yeah, he probably had a good hand. So I would still open up. I, I'm not gonna just shut down. Because I also put myself in their, in their situation. Well, I did this to this guy last time, am I gonna do it again? So in turn, I'll turn around and say, well, I'll open again. Because I don't think that they're gonna keep doing the same thing. Um, sometimes they might. Yeah, I don't, we don't have a reason really there.
Hey, can't really call there.
Yeah, definitely not. Sixes versus this guy under the gun shove. I don't know if that's gonna be too, too light there. Definitely an ICM factor.
Probably four, nine, nine, I suppose.
Yeah, eights maybe. Alright, so we're four-handed now. Four-handed, it's pretty much like a, uh, a bubble to get the three-handed because there's a nice little pay jump. A bigger pay jump here than any other, uh, time, except for second to first. Um, or third to second, second to first. So up until this point, this is probably the biggest pay jump. So huge, or not huge, but bigger bubble factor here to consider. You know, I, I can't say what I would, I, I would try something. You know, we folded last time, or I guess you raised him last time and he folded? I would probably either do it again or do a limp steal. Um, I just don't like folding so much in these spots. He's definitely on the looser side. Um, I, I would just try something. You know, let's see what we can get away with. I, I just don't want to keep folding to these guys. Um, yeah, I, I want to take the more, if it doesn't work, fine, we'll figure something out for next time. You know, I'm not gonna say the limp stab is a hundred percent here or we should raise a hundred percent. Uh, but I would try one of those plays. I mean, I, again.
See, I know that, I know that the stats is gonna say about me every single time on that, you know?
Uh, I wish one six times a lot more shirts than C-bets in general.
What am I jamming that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would, I would jam this.
I don't think he's that strong.
Good, no.
I kind of noticed that he does, he opens a bit, like, before he was min betting and then all of a sudden he opens with a bit more. And I find that he's probably weaker.
Yeah, I guess those guys in general here, you know, I mean, and, and, you know, we're not talking, I mean, obviously Kev's not here, but, you know, it's not like we're saying anything that he doesn't want to let people know. We all know, everybody that plays these games pretty much knows he's pretty aggressive. So regardless of who he is, what we know, like, you're playing against him, you know he's aggressive, so kind of just figuring out the best way to handle aggressive players.
Yeah, but with that Queen eight hand, if he did open any three bet, can you just, you could try four bet jamming?
Well, the whole premise is based upon that, is that, yeah, exactly, that he's three betting ultra light.
Cause a lot of the time when you three bet, he just knows that you're gonna fold. If you do jam him, he's gonna assume that you've got a strong hand. Like, I think I did that to him once, I four bet jammed him with like pocket eights and he folded, he said he folded queens to me. Cause he thought, wow, I had a monster.
I don't think it's bad. I don't think it's bad. I don't, a- again, it goes back to the concept of if we know he's opening so wide, I, I would just, uh, three bet him and I would, ooh, that's an interesting flop. What do you guys think here? I think I, I check raise. I think shoving pre-flop is fine. I would probably check raise. The pair and a straight draw. In my opinion, guys like this, um.
Great sight sixty K.
Yeah, I, I would pretty much get it in. I, I don't want to call out a position. I mean, what if we, a deuce comes and he fires again? I think we have a ton of equity. I think he's also C-betting a ton of his range here. Ah, deuce came, how about that? Yeah, there's queen.
What did he do then? Did he raise the river?
Uh, he called.
Alright.
Made a pretty good size on the river.
So that's true. What hands, what worse hands were cool.
Alright. Yeah, I mean, a- and another option here is raise bigger once in a while, mix things up. Try to like screw around with them. I mean, look, you have the big stack now, not him. So maybe raise even a little bit bigger. Make him think maybe he doesn't have fold equity this time. Go figure. It's become a fold fest. There we go. This guy keeps dumping chips to you. Um, I, I would probably just shove on him. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would probably start shoving on him. He's still got a manageable stack. He's not gonna, he shouldn't really want to call you too light there. You folded to him a lot. He doesn't really have any, and he's, you folded to his three bets a lot. Um, he shouldn't have any reason to think you're really ultra wide there.
Yeah, I wouldn't open, cause he can come out the top and just jam it.
Yeah.
And even if, even if your range card's there, he still can't call you light enough because of ICM, so.
Yeah. Nasty. So we got a nice little chip lead here. Hold on a sec. Alright, guy's getting a little bit aggressive. It's weird, he's getting a little bit aggressive, but he's folding a lot. Uh, that's just a straight up jam, hey now. Ah, man, um. What do you guys think? What do you guys think? What do you guys think? What do you guys think?
I would call three. I mean, he's, he's helping a lot over, over, over the raises and he's just not respecting, um, I mean, although here is a pretty standard, um, three bet shove considering his stack size, but he, he just went mad aggressively. So I, I expect, uh, he jack off to be quite ahead of his range.
Yeah, same, I agree.
It's for a big, it's a big stack here to shove. I, I, I know he's been kind of aggressive and all over the place. See, wh- why I'm having a little bit more of a difficult time is because if I think this guy is fishy, right? I just, I, I, I feel like calling off a large portion of our stack here with a hand we think might be ahead kind of lets him off the hook a little bit. We might be able to find even better spots.
It's just been, um, really aggro since three hundred, so I don't know what, cause he's like jammed every.
See, the, the weird thing is though, he's folded so many times in the blinds versus you.
Yeah, for sure.
We literally saw him that five or six times folding the blinds to you.
I don't even think this is as light here for what, for what the action's gone over the last ten hands.
Give me. There you go. That's pretty dirty.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'm lucky.
So that was pretty interesting. A little unfortunate there, but I thought overall it was a good game and, uh, you know, just those spots we talked about, being a little more aggressive.
Yeah.
Alright, boys. Sorry to kind of abruptly end here, but I thought this was a really good session. We'll get it scheduled for next week as well. If you guys want to do another one. So, good stuff, guys.
Alright, cool, Nick. Thanks, Matt.
See you guys.